Take the plants up and running, get them going to that decommissioning process. This group of, this company will come back and work with us in the city on that decommissioning plant, remove the remaining pile of solids, de-watering them, landfilling them, and then we got some environmental testing example that we got submitted to the state for that decommissioning process. It was not anticipated that that would be until 2026. So you guys are here now, just a jumpstart on it. Goal is maybe eighty percent of the solids could be removed now, so that maybe we don't have to do that for the future. We'll see kind of where that number lines up this winter. But yeah, moving right along, glad to see them on site. Got a lot of things worked out last week and starting to produce quite a bit of ours.
Any questions, Shelley?
No.
Jerel?
No.
Janine?
No.
Anita?
Landfill, do we use?
It's actually, it's tough to dispose of, and a landfill has to be fairly large, so it is a landfill in Auburn Hills.
I heard of that, this gave me that one too.
The other particular about this type of clean is wet, is wet waste, it's not wet, but it is prone to like landslides, so they have to mix it in with the dry traction they're getting, make sure they're only eighty percent of this type of material. It's the same for swallow remediation or other stuff like that, when you do landfill, they just have to be careful on overall quantities that they accept for some of their internal safety.
Thank you.
So the ways why retrieve a plant is about a forty million dollar project, and if I'm right, six or seven million of that project is the cleanup effort of the old lagoon system. And then approximately five million or so is concrete, is that, or is...
Yeah, I think concrete probably closer to six million if I had to guess, but yeah, there's fairly informed value there.
I just thought that was kind of an interesting thing when we were down there, that about thirteen million of the project is getting rid of the old lagoon along with just the cement work itself on site. It's pretty amazing, the work that they've already done, and how hard that is to form all of that, and the labor and stuff that goes into that.
Yeah, some of these guys have work ethic and just bent over, looking stuff up around. Today was a beautiful day, but last few weeks have been hot, and work on our hours. But yeah, they're doing, they're doing a nice job.
Thank you, Cory.
Thank you all. Hopefully next update, we'll see some buildings, more of them, so we'll find a product. So we got a little ways to do the inside, building to go up pretty quick, and then our work here to get inside, so.
Part of this lead removal is a local group too, is it not?
Yeah, so Merrill Bros is out of Indiana, maybe this work all over the country. So this is a fairly local project for them. And then they were planning on using CL Chucking and Excavating out of Ionia. They've been jockeying back and forth with a few chucking companies, just the people who are available right now. But it's fire and getting, and CL Chucking and Excavating is supposed to be helping them out some of that plumbing process.
Thank you, Cory.
Yeah, thank you all.
Cory covered B and C. So that will move us to new business D, lead line replacement program update. Motion support for this to the floor.
Support.
Councilmember Steele?
Yes.
Councilmember Leary?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Lang?
Yes.
Yes. John?
Yeah, another major project we have going on in town, we've had some funding for is the lead line removal. One thing I always like to point out when we bring this topic up is that, City of Allen, while we have a number of lead lines in town, service leads, we do not have a lead problem. A lot of people equate that to what happened in Flint and in Harbor. But in fact, we do not have a gross of water, so the lead does not reach up the lines, but as far as the city's concerned, they would like all those lines removed. And like I said, we've got funding for that. We actually, as a city, got a good jumpstart on this a few years ago. Russell's and our own staff have been doing a number of them. Of course, if DK came in and got us the funding and did the design work for how Russell moved, I think we're ahead of schedule, and I don't want to steal anything. Only inspire her, let her, let you know how hard and sick we are.
Sure. So the good news is, the city is ahead of schedule. Michigan rules require changing out any lead or galvanized steel that potentially be connected to lead by 2040. And so far, the city and Russell's Plumbing have done three hundred and eight lines. There were three hundred and twenty-four known lead lines, and then there's about six hundred and sixty-three home only lines that the materials are unknown. And it's estimated, kind of based on age of homes and results of verification of materials out randomly in the city, in the city earlier in the spring, that of those six hundred and sixty-three, fifty to seventy percent of those are probably lead, or more likely galvanized that is to be replaced. So the city got a forty-nine percent control forgiveness, fifty-one percent loan just drinking water revolving, state water revolving fund loan, which is good news that about half of that is being forgiven, kind of like a grant. And so that should replace up to about six hundred and sixty-two service lines. We were anticipating about four hundred and forty-five would be replaced with that loan, but this came in lower, so six hundred and sixty-two of them can be replaced. So that should get you pretty close to the remaining ones. There will probably, likely still be a handful that needs to be replaced after that project is done next year. But there's another funding application in to do some water main replacement from some of the old cast iron lines, and also try to get the remaining lead lines. And we should be hearing about that this fall when Eagle has their final intended use plan out for this current, or this upcoming this year set of projects. So we'll see on that one. But as far as the current project, that's going to replace most of the, most of the lead lines. Pre-closing for the loans actually tomorrow, and then the actual formal loan closing is next week, Tuesday. And then after that loan is closed, the city will sign the contract with a little bidder, which was tentatively awarded to CL Chucking. Kind of funny, but they were a little bitter, think we've worked with them before, they do an excellent job. So once the loan's actually closed next week, we can have the city sign that contract, and then issue the notice to proceed, most likely sometime in September. And then construction will likely start in late October or November. The good thing about lead lines is they can usually remove them even through the winter until there's like a hard frost. So we're anticipating work will be continuing during the winter, with a lot of it being done in the spring and next summer. Completion is going to be November of 2025 for that project, so should get you more than eighty percent, I would think, of the lead lines done by that time, and then, you know, the rest of them can be done, like the rest of them have been done, or hopefully if that water main project gets funded and the lead lines, those water mains can also get changed out, and you'll be way ahead of this 2040 deadline. So. Questions on that? You know, I've talked a lot.
Jerel?
No.
Janine?
No.
Anita?
No.
Shelley?
No.
Thank you. I would guess, just off the top of my head, that working with these, over the last two years, that we have received about, I would guess, twenty-five, maybe twenty-six million dollars in grant money that is being invested into building. And their team has done a great job, they continue to do a great job for us. That's a huge amount of dollars that is being pumped into infrastructure for building, and I certainly want to thank your team for the efforts that you put forward and the efforts you continue to do.
Moving on.
That will move us to new business E, code enforcement report. Motion support for this to the floor.
Move.
Support. Councilmember Leary?
Yes.
Councilmember Yang?
Yes.
Councilmember Steele?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, earlier this spring, we started to deal with whether it's better to do some code enforcement around town, including light, parking issues, grass, and anxious weeds. We were trying to give you a monthly report of the stats of that, and we answered tonight to give you a report for July. Welcome.
Good to be here. Favorite speakers.
Well, thank you. Yeah, we just wanted to give you the final numbers for July, that we got for code enforcement. We made a total of two hundred and fifteen contacts regarding some sort of violation of ordinance. Grass, we had seventy-five, we sent out notices, seventy-two of the owners cleaned them up on their own. The city had a contractor get three of them all, which is about typical. Front yard parkings, we had ninety-four, where we made contact with people, and everybody, most were really going to comply and did it, and everybody ended up taking care of the issue. Not saying it's completely fixed, I'm sure there are more cars in front yards, it will probably be an ongoing issue, so don't holler. So as far as light, junk in yards, things like that, we made forty-six contacts in July on that. Thirty-five of those got taken care of immediately. We're still working with some properties, we have eleven properties left that we're still working with them. They're making efforts, and we will continue to monitor those efforts. So that's the bulk of it. Just a little bit off maybe code enforcement, but during the MACR, we had some problems last year with some parking issues, wrong town, it was brought to my attention, so I advised the plan that I would actually pay an officer to do nothing but code, parking enforcement for the MACR. That officer wrote a hundred and seventeen parking citations, so my phone rang off the hook. Yeah, those were things such as parking too close to the intersection, blocking private drives, you know, parking or no parking, no, close to no parking. So it was primarily out of town people, some people that lived in town did receive citations, but we were out enforcing the parkings.
Any questions, Janine?
Do you know if this differs much year over year?
You know, I don't have a good comparison. I know some, Cooper inputs all this into the V S and A system, has over the years, so we could probably get those, and I think probably about October, November, I want to kind of give you a year's report of what we did, so maybe we can compare it to some past years.
Do you think that you have different properties that you go to a lot, or not a lot, but more, more than once?
Yes, I'm sure of that. I'm sure of it, yes. Grass is, is one of the things, you say, yes, there are properties that just repeatedly don't get the grass, and we send them a warning, and they mow it, don't get me wrong, they, the properties that we mow, according to the tech, we always mow these properties, it's nobody here, kind of a problem, so.
Okay.
Anita?
Anita.
Shelley?
No questions.
Jerel? From having this spread out for our officers, and because there are a lot of people in the audience today that I, that I feel like are new faces, would you explain what we're doing different, why we're doing what we're doing, and just kind of give the overview of what purpose of this report is?
Yes, so code enforcement has to do with the local ordinances, the light ordinances, junk in your yard, lawn grass. Kind of feel that it lacked a little bit in the past, so trying to make some efforts, as well as all my officers, to go out and enforce these ordinances that have been overlooked, I think, for a little bit. I know we've been on top of grass for quite some time with the blight, I think it got away, the front yard parking had definitely gotten away from the reaction I get, but we're trying to beautify building, we're trying to make it more attractive, I think that's everyone's mission, and we want, you know, we just want compliance with the law. Our goal is not to ticket people, it's not, we don't really want to do that. Our ultimate goal is to clean it up and beautify our town for everyone.
And we, we used to have one person doing it, and now we have all of our officers that are spread out over the city, so that it's different highs in different areas, and it's not just one person.
Yes, correct. It used to be just Marson Cooper, and now we've expanded that to multiple officers. So any officer, maybe the one that knocks on your door and says, hey, grass is too long, or hey, can you move your car up the front yard?
And the contacts made does not mean ticket gift, correct?
Most times, no. I, I don't have the numbers, but I can guarantee you our ticket ratio is very low on this, you know, and ultimately, again, that's really our, our goal, is not to ticket people, we just want to get it cleaned up and beautify our town.
Thank you. Thank you, Deanne.
Well, that will move us to new business F, potential golf cart ordinance. Motion support to bring this to the floor.
Who's support?
Deanne?
Yeah, real quick, the state now has a law that allows mixed penalties to permit golf carts to be used on street. There's certain conditions and rules. It's getting to be a fairly popular thing. I know I've got some interest from council members involved, residents saying they'd like to see it. In most cases, when I talk to those folks, it's, they want to make sure that the residents will live in rules, keep everybody safe, and obviously, if we were to enact something like that, it would not be forty-four or Bridge Street or any of the major truck haulers or major heavily trapped street in town. If you think there'd be some rules with it. Deanne has done extensive amount of research on this, I think he's actually got a proposed ordinance, if that's what the city council is going with, but we decided to come tonight to just have a good introduction, one that people like, and it should be back from council as well as maybe with all of, if people's thoughts are on whether or not we should have some ordinance. Deanne, if you would.
Yeah, city manager's correct, K P B, and request that I do some research on this, and a couple will say some, I just, and evolve. I reviewed all the laws regarding this, because within Michigan compound law two five seven point six, five seven A, there are other reference laws, or research field laws, and anyway. I reviewed all of laws, I also reviewed seven different ordinances from around the state. That was three from the west side of the state, which was South Haven, Luddington, and Manstein, three from the east side of the state, in Baltimore, Richmond, and Gibraltar, and one from right here in Miami County, which was Lake Odessa's ordinance. I reached out to multiple, I got responses back from Luddington, Manstein, New Baltimore, and Lake Odessa. I got four responses, South Haven, that was non-activity. But I tried to kind of keep it, cities our size, but I also wanted some smaller and some larger, well, New Baltimore is about double our size, but in population, so. Manstein, they said it was basically a non-issue in their city. They didn't really have a problem. Luddington basically said the same thing, they said their citizens are happy about it, they don't really have any issues with it. Lake Odessa, same thing, not really any issues that they had. I mean, they've all said that it takes some extra enforcement efforts to teach people what laws are, once they come to a fact, but no problem. New Baltimore, on the other hand, that chief, when I spoke to him, he was not a big fan of this, now mind you, New Baltimore, on the east side of the state, is about twelve thousand citizens. So little bigger, little bigger city, and that's twelve thousand citizens in four point six square miles of land. We're four point seven two square miles of land, with just under six thousand. So they're a little over double our size in the same amount of area. So he didn't care much for the ordinance, or they have golf carts on his road, his streets. But he said, again, they just, they had some accidents, most of these chiefs said the accidents were minor, they were property damage, Jackson only, there would have been, I think in Luddington, there was a, maybe some minor injury accidents, and also in Baltimore, they had an injury accident there. I have some ordinances that I got, trying to count them all on here. Three of them I thought were really good, I thought New Baltimore had good ordinance, I thought South Haven had good ordinance, and I thought Lake Odessa had a good ordinance. Anyway, all ordinances, all, this, this all has to comply with the compound law, two five seven point six, five seven A, all right? There are, I forget how many sections to that, but it has to apply with, it has to comply with one, five, six, seven, eight, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty as a minimum, in that, in that law. So in that, the highlights of what I just read through there are basically the law spells out that if you're under thirty thousand citizens, you can create this ordinance. So then you're right. And then in section five, it says that all operators must have a valid license, you can't be under the age of sixteen if you're operating a golf cart. Section fifteen sets golf cart speed limit fifteen miles an hour. Section sixteen sets the time of operation, state says you can't operate a golf cart a half, a half hour, the time period, a half hour before sunset to a half hour after sunrise. So there are some things in the law that we have to follow, and what I gave to you was not necessarily any proposed ordinance, it was things that I would like to see a variation of at least, in an ordinance that would be created by the city. As far as like the time period of operation of a golf cart, I mean, for month lives, I put April first, October thirty first. I only put that there because it coincides with our winter parking months, you know, those are off months, no winter parking, that ends on March thirty first, and begins again on November first, so that's why that's there. I can go through each one of these if you really want, or me too, but I just wanted you to have the information that I found, and give you some of the things that I would respect request that you consider when you, if you, if you're creating one of these.
I'll open it up if council has questions for you, but I guess myself, I'm looking for, like what you said, a certain time period that we would use them. I get your reasoning behind the whole snow removal period. I kind of look at it more limiting it more towards the school isn't in, so there would be less bus traffic and different things like that, more kids are home, so utilization for parents and grandparents to be able to take their grandkids or their kids around on golf carts, I think. And also on the time side of it, I don't really like the whole sunset, sunrise thing, because it's always a little, where am I at on that? So I would like a set time type thing, is my opinion of it. The other thing is, I would like now that you've started the process of it, is maybe have council hand this off to the planning commission to kind of go through that process and come up with the ordinance that maybe we can come back to then and take a look at. We'll start with Anita.
So I'm here, she and me talked briefly about side by side. Somebody had a side by side in town and wanted to get out to the numerous trails that we have, numerous backroads that we have in our area. Is there a reason that you, I mean, was that one of the can't do it by being the state of Michigan, or, you know, because if, even like where my house is, if I want to then get out to Orleans backroad, I have traveled through town at some point. So what was the issue, it doesn't sound like right, but you know.
So the golf cart and side by side are totally two separate things. The state of Michigan has a law specifically for golf carts, and they define golf carts in that statute. Side by side may be registered with the state secretary of state, it can be registered and operated as a motor vehicle. So we don't really need an ordinance, they can already go, the secretary of state's officer title and register it as a legitimate plated motor vehicle on a road, so anybody can do that. In fact, I think we have one in town already that's already plated. Yeah, Leo, yes. Yes.
Plated insurance?
Yep, yes, yep.
Was that a challenge?
Oh.
Is the insurance reasonable, but most people?
There's only a few insurance companies that will insure. Take Farmington.
So in town?
There's, there's only a couple insurance companies that won't insure.
Okay. And then you have to be able to drive at such a speed and those kinds of things?
You use the same, when you get it registered to the state of Michigan, they tell you to treat it as a normal vehicle. We do not take cars on the highway, we do up to the gas station, we have our green road, but, but my husband works in the garage, he don't do that, but yeah, you can if you have street tires on it, because it will go that speed limit.
Now, can you travel down roads still?
Yes.
Because, and ORB stickers are out there.
We do have them on there, but being road legal, you don't have to have the ORBs, but we do have them on there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, she's the one who has the one for talking.
That actually was my question, so she, she and you answered me, and her, so.
Jerel? The side by side thing was something that ran through my head too, but I knew because they're treated differently under the law, that they could just be registered as a, an on-road vehicle, and they would abide by the same rules as an on-road vehicle. My truck has ORB stickers, I can drive it on the road, I can drive it off-road, same thing. The golf cart stuff, I'd love to see it at the planning commission, I have a whole lot of highlighted and ideas that correspond with what you had as well, that I'm ready to put together and give the citizens of building another option to park around, see the city, bring them down to the park, et cetera.
It did state that, that to not, they weren't being modified, now, unless, you know, like manufacturer.
Not carrying more people.
Right, but that mean not put a backseat?
If it wasn't manufactured, then that was my recommendation, that we don't put somebody on a backseat. There are some, I have some very large concerns about all of this, I'm going to be honest with you.
Okay.
That's one of them right there. A simple rear end crash now becomes fatal to me, right? I already got dead kids, and I don't want to deal with that.
And, but you see, they also got to state that, say, they have these seatbelts.
Yeah, and I would, that's my, those are my recommendations, right? That's a lot of motion, all people, we say, we seat, take the belt with them, and I really don't want to see the extra seats on. Manufacturer designed it to fit so many people, I think that's good enough, you know. Don't may disagree with me in the end, but that's my opinion on it, so I don't really want to see that, you know.
That was something that I had highlighted, was the number of people and that we're facing, because I think, I looked through, I know Canadian lakes has a ton of golf carts, so I looked through their ordinances, they even allow, which I do not foresee happening, they even allow twelve to fifteen year olds, as long as they have an ORB certificate. But I have no tip, I don't foresee that happening, but when I saw that.
State law requires that they be at least sixteen years old, about, I don't know how much of all private drives are needed.
Yeah, and it, it could be, it could go into, I mean, it was a very long, but it could go into, they are allowed to do that on private drivers or something like that. So, yeah, I'd be excited to see it at planning commission.
When I was reading it, it seemed like it was pretty human, it was, the major problem was minors driving it. It was, the major problem was minors driving it.
And so, if council would like to slide this to the planning commission, um, sort of recommendation to get them to get it started and then they can work through the process and bring it back, Gus? Is that some?
Do we need a motion?
One other, before you do, um, maybe planning commission can, Deion, could he have a pretty good resource for you guys to kind of go over what his thoughts were when he was putting together the different nuances that he thought were important and then you guys could? Do you like motion support to bring this to planning commission?
Yes, I think, I second.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Steele?
Yes.
Councilmember Leary?
Yes.
Mayor Myers?
Yes.
And thank you for doing that work.
That'll move us to new business G charitable gaming license. Motion support bring this to court?
Second. Councilmember Ray?
Yes.
Councilmember Steele?
Yes.
Councilmember Leary?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Myers?
Yes.
Anita?
So, the Labor Day is a nonprofit corporation of the state of Michigan and a five one C three with the federal government. And so therefore qualifies to apply for raffles in gaming licenses within the state of Michigan. And it's a two part. First is approving the organization and the state agreeing that they meet everything. And then the second is for the time that it will be. This is part of that approving the organization. The state requires that the council agree that the Labor Day committee is a nonprofit and is active in the community. And I guess I wasn't able to just say, look online, we have Labor Day. So, they want this. They did already approve the first license, which is for this Labor Day, but they need this to put in the file. So, I would make sure that I brought it to the council on the first opening.
Questions? Show slide.
No.
Gerald? Why does the state require the city to do this? Cause I feel like I, with Mackenzie, that was true. We had raffles.
You only had to do it one time. The, so the entity is approved only the one time. And I don't know if you remember this, but when the duck race was being done by the wife, she also had to come for the same thing.
That was the same report?
Yes.
Okay. That was a different, I think.
Yeah, they would, it's that they want a resolution that you agree that this is a known entity to the location that will have the raffle. So, Mackenzie's either started before this was an issue and probably last ten years. I don't remember continually that it had, you know, that it happened. And then once this is done, we now have to ask. So, it might have been that it got done at one time or you were granted other. So, this is the.
I don't have any question. I have one. So, do they need a resolution or they need this point?
Well, this is their resolution. This is what they want.
So, I'll complete this requirement and you want me to give it to you?
Yeah, we did, I have a contact in the state that I have.
You don't have it on file, but when I action in the minutes, I'll put it in her file.
Yeah, so it, it's just making the motion, yes, you create. And then I think we'll have to sign that.
I think I just have to put like the lines and there's not much to it, but.
Yeah, just who want you guys, you know?
Yeah, you guys don't have to sign it. I just have to put it as DA's and then I'm basically the one that signs it.
And then I'll attach the state contact with it. She was at least sense enough to agree that she believed it was an entity and would allow one license to have them. So, we already had it, so that we were.
Zero motion to grant the charitable gaming license to the Labor Day.
Second. Councilmember Steele?
Yes.
Councilmember Leary?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Gladie?
Yes.
Mayor Myers?
Yes.
That'll move us to public comments. Any citizen that would like to comment on any subject? If you come to the podium, give your name and address for the record, please.
Mr. Mayor, if it's okay, can I just consult from right here? I'm hurting, getting old. Okay, everybody can hear me? I appreciate the hesitation. Hey, I, I, I wanna, I wanna speak on the voting in the primary here a couple of weeks ago. Um, I was raised in a family that when you turned eighteen, you didn't vote, there was something wrong with you and you heard it from the whole family. So, that's just how we ruled. That's, that's how we learned to go about it. So, when you guys, when the, when the council and today set up here a couple of months ago and we're talking about making some changes, specifically going from St. Joe's to, uh, to the Rockton, I was a little concerned because the one thing I like when I vote is I like consistency. It's pretty important. I've, I've even gone as far as casting my absentee vote when I was in the military from Tronheim, Marway, and Okinawa, Japan. So, I take the process very serious. So, I was a bit concerned, but I had an eleven year old and a seven year old granddaughter with me that day. And the seven year old has had no experience, but he only go to the polls with his grandfather. So, I said, let's go, we're gonna vote. Her first reply to seven year old is, what are we gonna vote on, cowards? No, Grace, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, I'm gonna show you how this worked. So, we went. And I want to say that I was wrong in my perception about moving from St. Joe's. Soon as we walked in, we were greeted by a gentleman that told us how the precinct thing was working, the one to the two compared to what I had experienced instead of over here in the past. And it was much more compact. Go to the table, go through, go to the first station to check in when I slipped. It was, the process, in my opinion, was so simple that the seven year old was leading me from the first table to the second table to where I voted. And compared to when I was able to do that with my grandfather many, many years ago, when you just walk into the booth and that old man would flip one switch, pull the lever number out. It's a little bit more complex when you have to explain when your seven year old's standing there and you explain, okay, this is the candidate that probably thinks is best for this job, so I colored this circle. And even to the point where, how come you don't go over there? Cause it's primary, you have to vote on one side or the other. But my, my point being that I was pleasantly surprised by the flow about the vote, where to vote, how to move. And as she can understand what the next stage was, now granted, the people that were at the polls, the poll workers were very gracious to answer her questions as well, which is pretty cool. The biggest thing that struck out to me was we're hearing a lot about ADA accessibility within the city, a lot more than what we used to. And you all would have to agree with that. It's been in a lot of conversations up there at the table. When we left, we went out and boom, there's the, there's the handicap parking versus where, from my opinion, it was a hell of a lot more complex and confusing at St. Joe's. Nothing against the people at St. Joe's, wonderful people there, they love the city, do that. But my point being, if a seven year old got it and knew the flow and as easily as we went through there and the big thing, the ADA exit, we didn't know to go down the racks with vehicles, I think building got better with the primary. And I think there's election back there made, but the primary really impressed me. Maybe it was having a grandkid and whoever, the, the flow, the accessibility, but in and out of there was awesome. So, I was wrong in my thoughts about St. Joe's and I thought that was well done over there. So, so all of you, I was pretty impressed, well done. Makes it easier. And there's a lot of challenges voting today, as we all know. So, thank you.
So, when are they gonna, what do you know about the golf cart? Can they get it authorized in the right event?
We will, the process will be able to vote to the planning commission now, which means?
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday. They will start to work through an ordinance and list out exactly some of the things that we're talking about tonight, whether time of year, time of day, who can drive them, where you can drive them. Uh, so anybody that would be interested in having input on that would come to the planning commission meeting and discuss that with them. They would have time for you to give comments if you wanted to or anyone that wanted to come. And then they will work through that ordinance. And once they get that ordinance completed, then they would bring that back to city council and then city council would take a look at it. And they would either send it back to planning commission with some different ideas or they would vote on the ordinance that they brought here.
Because we had a golf cart, we sold it because I had tried it twice, driving it on the side of town. I didn't ever go down the range in downtown. Sold it and about a week later, here comes a guy, down the road, told him downtown. And then I was in the dollar store, the woman was setting on a golf cart. I asked her if I could talk to her, she said, no. I said, do you have any calls? She said, no. Did that girl buy it? Never stop in down the road, George. And why me? I mean, all I done is get my great grandson, all right? You know, and say it on that time of the time where I live.
Hopefully, once we get the ordinance in place, you won't have that issue anymore.
Well, I wanna go buy a golf cart, but I don't wanna buy it if I get it right.
I cannot give you a timeframe of what it will take. I would assume with the proposed dates that, um, they're looking at as far as when they can run, that this ordinance probably would not take effect until next year. But hopefully, it would be decided this year on the ordinance and then you would be able to make your plans from there, what you want to.
Well, just one year, I mean, you know, number eight stopped twice. My own yard, it didn't. And then I seen ten or fifteen golf carts running down the road and got away with it. I mean, I'm seventy eight years old, I didn't agree with it. And I get great kid looking. He wanted to go here cause hot night and he wanted to just play. He was two and he wanted to go and I enjoyed it. Now I get to go. So, I enjoyed being in the great race years and that's what they like.
Can you give your name and address for the record?
Bernita Taylor. Three oh nine in Hamburg Street.
Thank you.
Good evening. Hi, John, how you doing tonight? My name's Keth North, I'm at nine twenty one Luther Street. And guess what? I have a condemned house beside me. And guess what? It's gonna get winter time. And then what happens? Squatters did. And I was told back in the spring from our city manager that you've soon contact the family to see about getting it boarded up. And it is now in August. I've not heard nothing back from him. And the place is still, I'm just waiting for a big heavy windstorm to come through the mat that they under. Um, there are stumps coming out of it again. I stood and watched it the other night. How many more years do I gotta deal with this? It's four.
What's the address of the home?
Oh, so this is something else I found out on the city map. My legal address with Iomia County is two fourteen Vero Street. But.
That's your address.
That's the address with Iomia County.
Yours? Or the house you left over?
No, that's mine with Iomia County, but for some reason, I ended up with nine twenty one Luther Street. There's no Luther Street sign up there.
We just want to make sure we don't tear down the wrong house.
Go ahead, it's high insurance.
So, the city has you as nine two one Luther?
Yes.
Okay.
And there's no Luther sign up there. I mean, I've talked to Deion about it before and he, he ain't sure at all neither.
You know where this house is, John?
It's a, you're talking about cleaning up the city, okay? This is an eyesore because just around the bend is Morgan Drive and I just seen tonight that they're in the process of getting ready to build another house down in there. So, you guys are talking about cleaning up the city? Let's clean up these condemned houses that the people have had years to either board them up or tear them down or whatever. But I'm done dealing with worrying about somebody's gonna come up to me in my backyard like I've had done twice. And they come out of that yard. So, just please address the issue that I asked. Thanks.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments, we'll close public comment. We'll move to city manager comments. Yeah?
I'd say to you, it's for you. It's sort of, we've been talking about the goose problem, both in Washoe Park and not only the little bit, it's East Riverside Park. Seen an increase in the number of geese that are coming there, there's a number of reasons. Uh, one, I think it could displace in the lagoons because of the activity that's there. There are still a number of goose families in the lagoons, but I think that the construction is probably personal to move on. The other problem is if you feed them and that is the number one attraction for geese. So, we have to put some controls in place. So, to kind of avoid some of the health problems and other problems that go along with geese, particularly in Washoe Park, which is heavily used, uh, we're looking at a number of things that we're going to do. Some of those would have to start in the spring. Uh, there's a chemical deterrent that is legal that we can put down there that is a, it hampers the geese, it tells them to go someplace else, but does not have an effect on anybody else, certainly on humans, does not have an effect. So, there's the deterrent. Uh, we'll be putting up some signs as well as an explanation to folks as to why feeding the geese is not a good idea. I know it's, it's a fun pastime. I've done it myself and passed with my grandkids, but if you look into it, you find that most of the things that you feed the geese actually affects their health. And so, we want to try to deter that, which then obviously keep them from coming around. Uh, we'll be looking at some sonic noise makers, uh, also some lights. These don't have an effect on humans. They, they're either not apparent or very, you know, different level of hearing. Uh, they will chase those geese away. Are also possibility of owls and coyote decoys and then possibly relocation. Now, you can work through the V and R for the relocation. My plan would be is whatever happens at the wastewater plant down the road with those lagoons, that would become what somewhat of a nature center for us. More of a natural place, not basically a park per se, but as a place where wildlife can live in a perfect setting. So, um, number of plans to be had for that and unfortunately not gonna happen overnight. But, uh, I think initially just getting people to stop eating them will make a big difference. Second, I have for you, we got a staff training plan. Next week, I'll be meeting with Michigan Municipal League, two particular training sessions that they are going to offer for us. One is topic resolution. Uh, the other is customer service. We hope they have those done either in person, in group, or individually through an employee's computer. But we'll probably offer both opportunities for that spending what they have available. So, customer service, topic resolution, and again, group training is, uh, as well as individual training. Equipment in the DPW, uh, we all would like to emulate the fire department and the inventory that they have and the process that they have for maintaining their equipment. We're trying to now inventory all our equipment. As you know, we purchased a number of new vehicles and pieces of equipment in the last couple of years. And, uh, we've been putting in place for maintenance for those items. We also want to include the older things. Uh, there's a lot of equipment that we have that most communities would sell, get rid of, junk out, but we still have it and it's still in, uh, in use. junk out, but we still have it, it's still in use. We don't want to diminish the number of vehicles we have, particularly for times like bad weather, certainly for snow removal and for water many breaks, you always have to have a dump truck available, so you want to have extras. So we're doing inventory of all that equipment, doing inspections on it, see which ones are worth repairing, and making sure that that's done either in-house or through local businesses as much as possible. So that we have to leave in the next month or two. We're doing I C A for business attraction and redevelopment here in town. As you recall, several months ago, Williamson Works worked with me to develop community zones or opportunity zones, in better terminology, showing all the vacant property or property that's not being utilized, such as the old newer brass, and what that availability is for developers in the areas looking for those types of sites. So those opportunity zones I did provide to I C A, I'm gonna make sure that that hits up the proper folks that are looking possibly located here or anywhere in this region. I think we need to play up on the fact that we live, we're here, close to Grand Rapids, and it is basically a twenty, thirty-minute drive. So we're going to send our people to Grand Rapids, why not Grand Rapids people coming here to work in a factory setting or any type of industrial setting. So, what that includes now are the opportunity zone maps, community chores, and in-person meetings with potential folks. Finally, what we're doing, obviously, is working now for Labor Day. It's very similar to what we would have seen for Gus Snacker, because that's where a lot of activities occur, and so our staff will be working on that getting ready. He did have a meeting last Thursday with the Labor Day group, I think he wants to prepare it all, but not cheap. Should be all set for Labor Day as we prepare. That's all I have, thank you.
Questions for John, Janita?
Um, how is the I T company going? Or should I just look at Dan?
Dan's the little guy that does the I T, but from what I understand, it's going pretty well, not near the problems we had. Coming in.
Are we seeing improvements and things that we didn't realize we could do there?
There are more to come. I had a meeting with them this Thursday, just kind of to call for their C I P, and they've got some things they need to get done, because we do have some equipment deficiencies that City of's utilized, supervised, things that need to change. They are slowly untangling the old mass that we had, and they're doing a very good job at it. I know that they prioritize stuff, and sometimes that doesn't make some people happy, but they do get to them, it's just they prioritize stuff.
I was quite happy when I heard that they basically hit the ground running.
They did.
Yeah, they did.
Yeah, that, that there wasn't a stone unturned into what they were wanting to do. I just want...
Shelley? Any questions for John?
No.
Janita talked a little. Do you have anything for John?
Did you want to discuss good news?
Yeah, I just wanted you to do that, and then... I appreciate all your input here, so I was gonna try to see. Then we'll move us to council comments, we'll start with Shelley.
Hey, Labor Day next week. Everybody, come on down. We got a lot planned, we're gonna try to have a good time. I wanna see all your smiling faces down there. So, come on down, have a good time with us. That's all I got.
Well?
The good news, I think it's good news, some people may not, but I think it's good news. We put in for, to receive grant money to put in a dog park here in Belling, and we did receive approval on that grant, which is sixty-six thousand?
Yes.
Sixty-six thousand dollars to put in a dog park in Belling. So, we are going to work through that. We submitted, in our proposal, we did submit it, an area, whole area, whole size layout, and then we'll go ahead and refine that to accommodate the sixty-six thousand dollars and stretch it as far as we can. So, I'm excited about it. I want to thank everybody. I want to thank all the new faces that came out, and I want to thank Cory for the wastewater treatment update, Elaine for the lead line replacement update, Chief Sauer on, we're all in the city, no, California. Mike, I do wanna thank you for standing up and letting the people that assisted in determining where the voting was gonna be, helping out during voting, and analyzing that process, changing it, and doing it for the better of Belling. And having that recognition, I think, is very crucial down there. Thank you for standing up and saying that tonight. I also want to then thank Janey, who was a big part of recognizing the efficiencies that could be had, and working with council to get that done. So, thank you. And then I want to thank everybody else that stood up and talked, and that's it.
Janey?
I appreciate everybody that came out tonight. I'm very grateful to police in Vanderburg for the twenty-four to twenty-five million dollar in grants that they helped us get, because things like wastewater and lead line replacement are things that people look at and go, oh, that's really beautiful, but they're very, very necessary to have a vibrant town. I appreciate the work that the Habitat Board did, and I think it's great to see young people get involved and become engaged in their community. And code enforcement, that doesn't sound like the last one, but it is important to make this a community that looks healthy. And I'm very excited about the dog park, and can't wait to utilize it.
I would like to thank Kathy for stuff, we'll talk with John and discuss that, I can tell you, it's not excuses and stuff, it's a process. Sometimes it can take a while to get through demoing the house out, so.
Yeah, I'll take that one. It's still not okay.
Thank you, Mike, for standing up and giving your opinion on the Bell Rockton. I want to also, you know, thank the D P W, the work that they've been doing. If anybody has noticed down by where we have Music on the River, the boardwalk, the cleanup that's been going on down there, it already looks a hundred percent better than what it was, but more work to come on that. Music on the River has been great this year, I'm not sure how many more events there are too, and we went to several of those, they've been really nice. Police, again, I've already talked about the police and how much we appreciate the work they're doing. I do want to say that some things that maybe people don't always think is beneficial, but coming and talking sometimes when I, I'm here on Saturdays does spur on some different things, and we do try to look at things that people bring to us. The golf park ordinance was one of them that had been talked about and thrown around about, but someone came Saturday or so ago and voiced their opinion to me and made it pretty clear what their expectation was, and I thought it made sense. So we do take seriously when people come and talk to us. We may not always agree, but we certainly try to get on the same page with everybody that's in the city and try to make the city a better place. And just while council was giving their comments, I sit back and think, because I, I don't think this council gets enough credit for the work that they have put in over the last few years. I mean, there is so much stuff that is going on in the city. The police equipment that has been purchased over the last few years since D M was here, the finance software that was implemented in the finance department, the I T support, the wastewater treatment plant, the different road repairs and grants and stuff we've received there, the bridge repair program that we've got going, that you'll see more repairs done on bridges within the city, all of the grants that we've gotten, the fire trucks and different things that we've spent out over the last several years, the D P W equipment investments that we did, this council all worked on that, those things to bring them here, dog, the dog park and the grant we received, the new city hall. There's so many things that have been worked on over the, just over the last two to three years, that this council has worked very hard researching and trying to figure out what is right. And we know that taxes in Belling, taxes, I sat on council for eight years almost, and taxes have never been raised here. We continue to do with what we have been given, we don't do a head to override, so we do tax at eighteen mils, which is high, but we only collect in less than sixteen mils because of the, so I think it's just important to know that the city, I believe this council has done a great job for the citizens here, and I'm proud to sit with the four members of this council every week, every couple of weeks when we meet, and the work that they put in, and the hard votes that they do. But I think in the end, you can see that the city continues to move forward, and I think it's a better city, and I think this council can be proud of the work that they've done. So I just want to thank them also for everything they do, and everything they put up with to be here. So, and that's all I have. So if I can get the emotion... Maybe you talk too much for female.
She's got a lot to say.
Janita, go ahead, you've got two minutes.
We have a pet show in town on Labor Day weekend, everybody needs to see a pet show, because that might be really the major part. And Shelley's right, come on down and have fun, but the pet show is always fun. And there's New Revel, and the tractor show on, on that?
Yep.
Should be wonderful, we have a wonderful F F A group at the high school. And I want to bounce off Mike's comments. As somebody who has a disability to go and vote, I take great pride in the fact that I will not vote absentee, and so I utilize that, and this was my second time there, but it was combined. I've always voted in the Bell Rockton, but this was the second one combined. It was wonderful. Janey always thinks about, okay, how, you know, how is this going to work? And there is enough spots, and there are always people there to answer any questions, and it was very easily decided all this time. So I do agree with him on that. And, okay, so it's two and a half minute. Yes. You were gonna ask for more. Sure. Mayor, listen, wait at the council, can I make two very quick comments?
You just get out of control.
I am. She had my excuse.
No, they're good. I just wanted to mention about these, these five of our programs were pretty successful, and this, there's two weeks left this week and next week. There's two food trucks that are planned to come in the next two weeks, and one is a brand-new food truck, and so he's going to be selling his food at reduced prices and has a veterans discount, and is looking for feedback, so... The potato guy is coming. The new food truck is not going to do their, they have crunch fries and a few things like that, but he's not going to sell them because he says they can go pick potatoes, and this way he can pass it through on his sandwiches. But his stuff is going to be at a reduced price, so people can try and make him feedback. So I thought that that would be worth mentioning. And then just, I want to say I appreciate the comments on the voting, I do try really hard to think about that, and just for, I, I understand the concerns of coming in one door and leaving through another, I have to do that, especially when November comes, because there's not really going to be flow for people to move back through. And I do want to note, I'm staying working with this end all day, and I spoke with many people that did want to come back through, and I said, you're not gonna have to be able to do that in November, because it is going to be busy. However, if somebody does have a disability or needs to come in through the back, we do have our absentee county board back there, so you, so you can stop there, and they will work to assist you, so you can, if you do have restrictions that prohibit you from coming in one door and leaving another, you can park in the back. I do have extra handicap signs that are, that are cordial that I use just for elections, so you can park back there and come and enter and exit through there, so I do try to make it very handicap accessible. Just as a side note, I try to be very conscious about that, because I grew up in a household with two people that have wheelchairs. So I try to take pride in that. And really quick, I just wanted to let you know, Studio Belling had five hundred and seventy-two voters, which was a thirteen percent voter turnout. We had a bigger turnout in February, which was twenty percent of eight hundred and sixty-two voters. I anticipate November to be much bigger, but if you don't want to wait in line, because there probably will be a line in November, please be advised that there's the early voting that takes place in Ionia for ninety days ahead of time, or you can certainly vote absentee or come to the city clerk's office, and I'd be happy to assist you. Thank you for giving me a comment.
Now, do you want that motion voting?
Support.
Motion support food turn.
So who?
So I can vote, there you go.
Council member earlier?
Yes.
Council member Davis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clay?
Yes.
Councilmember Steele?
Yes.
Mayor Myers?